All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, all right, moving on to file PZ 2021-32. Five, I guess.
Three twenty-five.
Yeah. And sales is five, Renes, got any contact?
Okay, the second and final item on the regular agenda, PZ 221-325 is a request to abandon a portion of Delta Street. Arthur Limerick is requesting the abandonment of Delta Street east of Eleventh Street. The owner of thirty-five seventy-five Delta would like to develop this property. The only access to the property is through the undeveloped Delta right-of-way. By abandoning the right-of-way, the driveway, or excuse me, a driveway could be constructed in this area instead of a full city street. Let me, I'll go ahead and walk you all through the, what is being proposed. If you're familiar with this area, here's the intersection of Washington Boulevard and Eleventh Street, of course. And you may be familiar with the development on the corner. This is the stretch of property in question, and it's, again, as labeled, Delta Street. And as you can see, it, along with some other areas, were platted, or at least set aside many years ago for future streets. But based on the development pattern, you know, the street just, it hasn't been constructed for any good reason through the years. And you can see across the street, there's some right-of-way, and it's, you know, again, it, it, it goes along the railroad right-of-way. So, again, the idea is it was set aside probably many, many years ago when the railroad existed. You may be familiar, there's this cut-through from Eleventh down to Washington in front of the barbecue restaurant there. But based on the layout here, you know, that may be the case if this street were ever developed, but it's just, we don't anticipate that that's the case. So, again, the applicant is trying to develop this property back behind the property here on the corner of Washington Boulevard, and let me show you the, the site plan and give you a little bit better idea. Again, the corner of Washington, Eleventh would be to the south, kind of the bottom left of your, of your screen. But what he wants to do is, is develop this property here. And again, normally when you, oops. Normally when you improve a city street within a city right-of-way, it has to be to city standard. So like the streets we talked about in the last subdivision are fairly extensive and they're fairly expensive when have, when they have to be built to city standards. So the idea here is to request the abandonment of this so that the, the developer does not have to pay for a full city street. It could be a lesser standard of a driveway. But based on the review, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to a few conditions. And this is a little bit different than is in your staff report. But essentially, condition one would be retention of the right-of-way area as an easement. And that was based on comments from the water department, because there are two sewer lines located in the easement. So we want to retain that. And also Drainage District Six would like to have access over this area because they do have some drainage facilities to the north. So again, staff recommends approval based on condition number one, retention of easements within the right-of-way. Condition number two, any construction of dry, of a driveway within this easement would require permission from the city, Beaumont Water Department, as well as Drainage District Six, so that they could have some, some control over the, the standards of the driveway that gets constructed if approved. And then finally, again, because they are requesting abandonment of the property, a third condition would be if approved, the applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at the applicant's expense. The appraisal and commit, title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council's agenda. And as you may know, this is a typical condition of an abandonment right-of-way because, in a sense, they would be buying the property from the city. So that's a standard, standard condition with these types of application. But based on that, are there any questions about this of the staff?
What is the size of the property?
So, the area is point eight-one-five acres. And this is the, the survey of the property in question.
So applicant is going to buy the property?
Yes, so, again, as we, if this is approved, we would ask that they survey the property, get it appraised, and essentially if approved by city council, they would pay the city for the value of the property.
So according to this here, the, is this for a street or is that for the development?
So what, let me go back to that overhead. So if, if you're familiar with Eleventh Street in Washington, if you've driven by, you'll see there's development on every corner. But this property in the back, the, there's really no good access to it. It is fronting on Delta Street, but it's unimproved. And so, if there's no improved street on an undeveloped property, we typically don't allow development on that. And so, there are two options. One is the developer could construct this street to city standard, but it's very, very expensive to build a street, street to city standard. The other option is, again, if the planning commission recommends and the city council approves, the city can abandon this area to the property owner so that they could build a driveway of a lesser standard to access the property in order to develop it.
Well, I'm trying to understand. I'm looking at the street. And if the dimension is sixty feet, part that's going to be your street, what is going to be developed? And will they also own the land?
Right, so what's in question now is only this area outlined in red, and there's not a street there currently, it's just right-of-way. So essentially, it's land that's set aside for a future street, but there's no street there now. So if we go forward to his plan, again, this is the same area, and you'll see Delta Street here. This is Delta Street right-of-way, but there's not a street there. It's just, it's just land set aside for a street. And then again, you'll see the Santa Fe Railroad here, Eleventh Street is, is off here to the left. And so this is what the applicant is preparing, is planning, proposing to develop. So this is parking, and this is a, a small, I believe, a small restaurant. And so if Delta Street were built to city standards, it would be no question, they could simply access it from Delta Street. But because it's not there, the two options are, they can either, the applicant can either develop Delta Street, which again would be very expensive, or if the city council, planning commission recommends, city council approves, if the city council determines that this is not needed, then this could be vacated or abandoned and essentially given to the adjacent property owner at a price. Again, I mentioned they'd have to have it appraised, and they'd have to pay for it. But it could be conveyed to the property owner. And again, the benefit there is they could do essentially a driveway to this property instead of a full city street. And I'll say that over the years, we've, we've been asked about this property because it's a pretty high-traffic intersection. It's just, and again, going back to the overhead, it's just, we don't, we just don't anticipate anyone ever wanting to develop a full city street here. You know, again, to connect with other un, unconstructed streets back here. So, that's why the applicant is coming before us, basically asking us to convey this to him so that they can do this small development here. Any other questions? And again, I believe the applicant is in the audience.
Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Arthur Limerick, fifty-eight oh-six Chapel Lane, Beaumont, Texas, seven-seven-seven oh-five.
All right, what would you like to tell us about your project?
What we're trying to do is put a fast food-to-go place right there on that corner. It's a small business that's twenty by forty in that section there. A lot of people don't want to get out and go into a restaurant.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, could you get a little closer to the microphone, please? I have a little trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry, it'd be convenient for the neighborhood, because a lot of people don't want to go inside a restaurant still. And when you can go in and order from one side and come around the other side and pick it up and go, it's more convenient for the public and the community to develop. We would like to get you guys' approval on it to build it.
What kind of business is going to be?
It's a, a fast food-to-go. Barbecue, soul food, whatever that's on the menu.
Do you understand the conditions that the city is asking of you?
Yes, ma'am, we talked to the different entities already, and we already approved to give them easement in there so they can develop it, so I mean, so they can get to the next property.
Will this interfere with the current businesses? Will it interfere with the current businesses that already operate?
No.
Because I think there's a, used to be a service station in the front, and there's a lube shop. So this is sitting directly behind it just before you get to the, to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, it'll sit right behind those too.
And I'm assuming that what you're asking is that you don't want this whole, yet, we're not developing the whole thing. You just want a portion for him to have access to his property?
Yeah, essentially what you all, what the planning commission is considering is whether or not the city needs to hold on to that area outlined in red for a future street. And Mr. Limerick is proposing, again, because if you look, he doesn't have access to Eleventh Street. The only access to Eleventh Street from this property that he wants to develop is through Delta. And because Delta is city right-of-way, the only way for him to use it is, is to build a full city street, which is very, very expensive. So the idea here is, if the planning commission agrees and the city council agrees that we don't need Delta reserved for a future city street, then Mr. Limerick can acquire it and build essentially a driveway. So like more of a commercial drive, access driveway to the, to the lot instead of a full city street. So, we've presented the plan to you so you know what, what Mr. Limerick is trying to, is trying to achieve here. But the real question for the planning commission and the city council is, do we need Delta Street reserved for a future street? Or could we, you know, agree to go ahead and sell it to the applicant? That's what's before the commission today.
So just to make it clear, he would be acquiring that entire piece in red?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would give us access directly off Eleventh Street?
Right.
To get into, in and out as well.
Anybody have any more questions for the gentleman?
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is this a public hearing?
No.
Motion to approve PZ twenty-twenty-one dash three-two-five with the three conditions.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Uh, Mr. Beatty. Okay, we, do we have all of our, do we have a quorum of counsel here yet? Okay, so that concludes the regular meeting, and we'll move into the joint meeting. Oh, we need a real call for the city council, please, Kathy.
Thank you, ma'am, for the real call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Muton?
President.
Mayor Protim Samuel? Absent. Councilmember Felschall?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
And Councilmember Durio?
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaumont City Council, where there's a quorum between the Beaumont City Council and the Fire and Insurance Committee. Today, were there items that you were only going to speak on today? If you have any questions or any concerns or any agenda items for today, please speak today. Each item will be called out so that you will have an opportunity to speak on it. And each item will present, will be presented to the Beaumont City Council within the next one to two weeks. So thank you for coming, and we will begin.
All right, Chris, item twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two forty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Item PZ twenty-twenty-one-two forty-three is to consider a request for the conveyance and dedication of private streets and infrastructure to the city of Beaumont. Before I get into the staff report, let me just kind of give an overview about what is being considered here. As you may be aware, we have, most of the time, city developments are done similar to what we just talked about in the preliminary plat, where a developer comes in and builds a city street, builds water, infrastructure like water, sewer, drainage, et cetera, to city standards or county standards. And then once that meets our standards, the city council can accept that, those improvements as public. And then they become public, and they become the maintenance responsibility for the city in perpetuity. So the city is, is basically responsible for maintaining. However, there are from time to time private street subdivisions. Now, if a developer comes in and wants to build a private street subdivision where you may have a gated community, that's fine, but the infrastructure has to be up to city standards. But you can still, again, if approved by the planning commission, you can still have a private subdivision. Now, there are streets in the city that are in the city for a variety of reasons. They may have been platted or developed, you know, a hundred-plus years ago. And so those may be private. And in this case that we're about to talk about, that's a private, it's a private drive subdivision that was platted long before there was a planning commission in the city. So, what's, what's before you today is a private drive subdivision that was not approved by this body. In fact, when it was originally developed, we believe it was outside of the city limits. And what is being requested is that the city take over the maintenance of this street and the infrastructure in this development. And back in twenty-seventeen, the city council approved a process by which this, this could be considered. And so the process is essentially those who have controlling interest of the neighborhood. And so in this case, it's most of the property owners. But if there's a homeowners association, it's, it's usually seventy-five percent of that homeowners association, have to appeal to the city to ask, you know, to basically convey or change from private to public. And so it goes through this process. The next step in the process is that we ask our public works engineers to go out and assess what is the, what is the status or the state of that infrastructure? And what are the estimated costs to bring that infrastructure up to what we would consider an acceptable city standards? And so, based on that, this body would consider whether or not, in the end, it makes sense for the city as a whole to convert these private facilities, water, sewer, and streets to public. Again, for perpetual maintenance going on into the future. So that's what's before you today. So I just wanted to give you that background as we go into this particular case. So again, PZ twenty-twenty-one-two forty-three. Scott Holloman and the heirs of the A.J. Fasulo estate have requested that the city of Beaumont accept maintenance of the private drive east of West Calder Road and north of Baker Road and its infrastructure. The city recently adopted a process for the conversion of private streets and other infrastructure to public ownership and maintenance. Attached in your staff report, as mentioned, is an analysis of the condition of the existing private infrastructure that was conducted by the Public Works Department. And I'll go ahead and, and read over a summary of what those departments have found. From the Public Works Engineering Group, engineering surveyed the property and did an analysis of the streets and drainage. The existing pavement was found to be composed of a mixture of gravel, chunks of concrete, milling material, and asphalt. The entire pavement is in very poor condition and requires a full rehabilitation. The drainage infrastructure is comprised of an open ditch and a driveway culvert network. The ditches have been poorly maintained and not graded properly to drain. A majority of the driveway culverts are not set properly to drain water effectively. There are several buried culverts that are impeding drainage. And a preliminary estimate from Public Works on the cost to bring those up to standards would be four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand six-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Next is water utilities. A review of the plat and the construction plan shows that the water lines are not located within a utility easement dedicated to the city of Beaumont. Due to the unknown condition of the water and sewer lines, it is recommended to delay acceptance until water meters are relocated to meet city standards and sewer services are verified to not run within private property. Comments from the fire department. Fire Marshal Candina reviewed the site plant, the site, and the fire department does have concerns about the width and load limits of the current private streets. City streets must have a seventy-five thousand pound load limit rating and wide, be wide enough for fire apparatus. The majority of these streets are narrow, being approximately ten to twelve feet wide. Let's, let's see, solid waste, solid waste provides garbage service to twenty-four twenty-five West Calder Road. If the city provides solid waste services, improvements to the roads will be required to maintain the weight of the garbage trucks. And let me go ahead and walk you through some photographs of what, what we're reviewing here today. And again, West Calder you see runs north and south here, and what's in question are the private drives that are in this kind of an H, or a sideways H, that access West Calder directly. And, you know, I mentioned a minute ago when we looked at the preliminary plat for the new, that new neighborhood, again, you've, you've got to build the streets to city standards before you can sell off any lots for development. Doing some research, again, trying to figure out, you know, how this got developed into a private drive subdivision. Again, it predates many of our institutions here. We believe that this area was annexed into the city in the nineteen-fifties. This area was platted, it looks like, in the nineteen-twenties. And this is an aerial photograph we found from nineteen-thirty-eight. And you can see, and if you look at a larger view, it appears that there, it's, it's, there's some oil facilities out there, drilling, drilling activities, and then here you can see probably a higher density of what's out there now. But just, you can see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so more than ten dwellings along this area. So, again, don't know, it, it appears to be housing, so I don't know if it was housing for, in general, or related to the oilfield activities. Some of the neighbors may be able to provide some better history on that. So, anyway, just wanted to give you that context. Uh, this is a view of one of the streets. Also, one of the streets here. Again, you can see the open ditch drainage. Here you can see, I believe this is coming off West Calder. You can see the private drive sign here. You can see, some of these photographs, I think were provided by one of the applicants, so we included these in the presentation. So you'll be able to see, this is, uh, it looks like July of this year, drainage issues, of course. These are also from July. Yeah, looks like that one's dated September of this year. So you can see there's, there's definitely some drainage issues out there. Anyway, based on, you know, again, based on the condition of the existing infrastructure, the fact that it has been private for what appears to be many decades, the question at hand, again, for the planning commission is consideration of whether or not you recommend to the city council as to whether or not it makes sense for the city of Beaumont as a whole to convert these private streets and this private infrastructure to public. Again, once it becomes public, there's a certain expectation that things function properly and a certain expectation that it's maintained in perpetuity. So that's, that's what's before you now. Based on the assessment of the, of the existing infrastructure by the various departments, staff is recommending denial of this application. We have sent out notices, though, to various property owners who are interested in the area. We have received six in favor. Again, most, most if not all of those being the applicants. But based on that, are there any questions of staff?
Thank you so much, Mr. Boone. As we just see with the pictures, you know, the flooding is a serious problem, and we're compassionate toward those homeowners who have to deal with that. And we do see what's laid out is a tremendous cost for the city to take over this property. Would there be any advantage for the city to, to move forward with it at all?
Not a direct advantage. I mean, we have to, we do have to take into consideration that they are located within the city of Beaumont. And, and that's always a factor in terms of whether or not, you know, we should move forward. It's just with, with the current state of the infrastructure, especially the drainage, especially the streets, you know, that also has to be balanced.
Is there any process that they can go through to bring those things up to a standard that we would be acceptable for the city?
So in our current policy, we do not have, many cities would have a, basically, a policy whereby, you know, they might accept it, or they might say, look, we'll accept it if you make improvements up to this level. And if, if they do, then we would, they would, then we would accept it. And, you know, that too could be a consideration of this body of, you know, you might, you might recommend that it, you know, denial, you might recommend approval, you might recommend approval subject to bringing it up to these standards. Or, or sending it back to Public Works to determine what standards might be expected.
Right, because we couldn't establish those standards here today.
Correct, that's correct.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There are structures already back there. Over the years, have garbage service been going there, the emergency vehicles been going to it? Have they have accessed these properties before?
Right, so I believe the garbage service, and neighbors can correct me, I believe the garbage service is off West Calder.
A separate private service.
Yes, but I would expect that police and fire would respond to the dwellings. And again, there are approximately, I think, ten or eleven single-family dwellings back there. So would the police and fire respond back there? Yes, I would expect they would. The, the comments that I made are based on, you know, what police and fire would like to see. With a heavy pumper truck, ambulances and things like that, being able to turn around larger trucks, that's what they would want to see.
So they've already, I'm trying to find out, they haven't tested whether these streets are already holding before you take it from private to, to public, right?
So, you know, could a fire, would a fire truck go down that street? I'd expect they would. An ambulance go down that, police, police car would. And again, the neighbors can correct me if, if, yeah, I would expect that they would. So, but when the comments are made in this, it's what would we want? In other words, for a new development or some reasonable, you know, what would we want to see? to see to accommodate those larger vehicles? As a practical matter, would they go down there? I'd expect they would. And I expect they do, it sounds like.
Chris, what does private mean?
So, you maybe where private drive subdivisions, you know, they provide security. People may pay a premium to have a closed gate, so that only neighbors and their guests can access it. So, in, to many folks, they just, they, they might pay a premium to live in a private drive subdivision, so they have better control of access. So in my mind, that's what private means. Whereas public, it's open to the public. So, there's no, you know, there's no denial of access to a public street. And so, in my mind, that's the difference between private and public, is basically control of access. And, and, and again, historically, because we've seen a couple of these applications in the recent, recent years, is when you build the infrastructure, again, it's very expensive, the private drive is an, is an appealing selling point, but infrastructure, as you know, ages, and if it's not maintained, or even if it is maintained, eventually it's got to be, you've got to have a substantial overhaul, or at least substantial maintenance. And so, sometimes those expected costs balloon and it becomes an issue. And that's why I mentioned earlier that when we do private drive subdivisions now, we would not allow, you know, we would not allow somebody to, to, you know, divide up property with a street like that. We would say, "You've got to have a city street." The idea is that, you know, when and if we ever did accept it in this way, it would be up to a certain standard.
And just for clarity, if the city hypothetically wanted to move forward, where would the funds come from? What, what budget would those come from?
It's unbudgeted. Again, if, if the city council said yes, they could accept it as is. Again, they could say, "We want to make these minimal improvements." But to try to answer your question, they're unbudgeted, it would come out of the capital program, but it's not budgeted.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Well, Chris, when you adopted the new process, were, was there a, money involved in a capital, a cap on the money that was involved in basically approving something this magnitude?
No, sir, there's not a, there's not a magic number or a bottom number. It's basically, it's a case-by-case basis. So, that's the current policy.
Okay.
But were we to, to deny this, they can go back and make some improvements and then talk to Public Works again to see if it could be, come back?
They could. I would, I would recommend if that's the avenue they want to do is, yeah, go speak with them and, and see what may be a reasonable inter, you know, intermediary lo, level based on this, because, you know, it looks like, yeah, it's a substantial amount as it sits.
Okay.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Is there, are they planning on selling property in here for development, or is this just something that they're keeping for themselves? Just mostly, I saw, I think you counted out 10 properties on one screen, but I didn't see it on another.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't know what they're plan, I think their, their plans are, they just really want the infrastructure improved because obviously the streets are at a certain level and the drainage is an issue. That's, that's my estimation of what they're asking for. And, you know, as any normal neighborhood, there will be sales of property, but these are all, I believe, many different owners. I will say that if there were larger tracks in there, as we discussed earlier, we would not allow them to subdivide them any further for any fut, for any additional development, because, again, that's what this body does, is tries to make sure that, you know, this, this kind of thing does not happen in the future, going forward.
And is the applicant in the audience?
I believe they are, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you, Ms. Boone.
All right. I know this one's a public hearing. I would like to ask the applicant to come forward. Please state your name and address.
My name is Scott Hollman. I live at 2499 West Calder Road. I, I would like to address some things.
Please.
There are 12 homes in there, 16 properties, several undeveloped, okay? I don't think any of them would be splitting because they're, you know, they're smaller lots in there. But, and, and the other thing that I wanted to address is that before, before the zoning commission came to be, right, this, this property had already been developed, okay? Whether it was part of the city of Beaumont, I'm not sure, okay? But these properties have also been given the right to build per permits through the city and, and things like that, without any advisory that, "Hey, we're living in an illegal subdivision," okay? So, my name's Scott Hollman. I represent Fig Acres Estate and its residents, formerly owned by A.J. Fasulo and his spouse. I bought my home in April of 2017, and when I purchased my home, I was informed that the roads were private, but they were in the process of having the city of Beaumont take over maintenance because the previous owners had been deceased. After three years, I started to investigate and, to determine what the holdup was. I discovered that it had been bogged down in red tape, and so I got involved to see if I could help. At that point, I found some disturbing news. I found out for the first time that it had been deemed an illegal subdivision, which I had never heard that term before. That was the first time for me. And I was shocked that the taxes were still being collected from the residents of the Fig Acres Estates, and then they were calling it an illegal subdivision so that no improvements had to be done. So, for 60 years, the residents have been given taxes, and for 60 years, they've never received any ditch improvements or any road improvements of any kind. So, that I found alarming. And I know that the initial cost will be expensive. I realize that. I don't, I don't think the maintenance will, will be very much at all, since we have 12 residents, you know? There's no through streets on the backside, so there's no through traffic or anything like that. But I do understand that that would be significant amount. But I also understand that these are tax-paying citizens. We all pay our taxes. We all do what we're supposed to do, and we're just asking for the service that we're owed, you know, that we paid for, you know? Out of our subdivision, there are five residents that are elderly. They're on fixed incomes, and they can't afford costly flood insurance. Every year, we get closer and closer to one of them flooding. And when one of them floods, it's going to be heartbreaking, you know, because they're not going to have the money to rebuild. But yet, all the tax money that they paid in, that it could have been prevented by having these ditches dug out correctly and these roads built up. As soon as the city took over that area, or as soon as the planning and zoning commission came to be, at that point is when we should have made this right. Now, I, I feel like as a city, we have the opportunity to fix it and make it correct before something happens to one of these elderly families that can't rebuild. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You said you purchased your property in 2017?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when you purchased it, when, did they do a survey for it?
Yes, sir.
It didn't have any of that on it?
No, sir. I went through Stewart Title Company, and I was told by the, you know, the residents in, in the neighborhood that their streets were private, but that they were in the process of getting the city to take over maintenance of them. And that, you know, after three years, I was like, I, I don't know if things move slow down here, but after three years, I was like, what, what's the holdup? You know, what's going on? And so, when I got involved, I am a surveyor, and so at that point, that's when I, I tried to take it the rest of the way so that we could get here, have a meeting with y'all. And I certainly appreciate y'all asking all the questions before. To me, it means you care, you know, because I care. I, I'd like to pass this home on to my children, you know what I mean, in not this big a mess, you know?
Mr. Hollman, could you clarify when you say, "They said the city would take over maintenance," was that the local residents, or was there anything in writing, or could you expand? It was just sort of word of mouth?
Yes, ma'am, it was, uh, they were in the process, and then they, they got bogged down at some point. I, I think it was with getting all the owners, because I had to get every owner that owns a piece of property out there, sign a petition in order to get this ball rolling, you know? And a few of these lots are vacant, and no one knew who owned them, you know what I mean? So I had to go onto the website, Beaumont website, find out who owned them, how to get ahold of them. I mean, some of them didn't live anywhere near the area, you know, some of them lived in Houston. And so that took, took me almost six months to get all the paperwork and get it turned into the zoning.
Okay, Mr. Boone, was there ever a process in place where the city was supposed to go over and take over this private street?
No, no, ma'am. The only thing I recall is one of the neighbors had approached us, maybe five or six or seven years ago, about the process, and we explained that, that basically this is the process, and I think she was trying to get the names all together, and so, but again, it never, it never got to the first step of the process, which is, which would be coming before the planning commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
So, is there any alternative, other than making a, a public street that benefits them, as already being purchases of the property? I'm, I'm assuming that you said most, your main issue is if it flooded and there's not proper drainage?
Yes, sir.
And the question I'm, I'm asking is, is there options? I, I know that, uh, one was to deny, one of was to take it back to the Public Works and have them rework to find out if there's some other options.
Yes, sir.
So, and Tyrone can correct me. In my mind, there are three options. One is deny, one is approve as is, and the third may be that there's some kind of standard that Public Works could say that, you know, this would be an acceptable standard, and then again, ultimately, city council would make the decision on which of those three options. And again, I know it's confusing because these are single-family homes, this is a neighborhood, and but for the roads and maybe the drainage, you would think it's just a regular neighborhood. But from a legal perspective, if you ride by, the better way to think of it is almost like an apartment complex, where, you know, if you can imagine, these are apartment buildings with parking lots for the residents and drainage, we, we, the city cannot go on private property and make those kinds of improvements. And so, in my mind, to answer your question, those would be the three options. The city council will ultimately decide, approve, deny, or maybe, you know, approve with some kind of acceptable level of infrastructure improvement. But that would be up for the, ultimately, city council to decide.
And one of, one of the things that I, I was confused about is that A.J. Fasulo and his spouse have been gone for just south of 10 years. There's been no property taxes paid on these roads in 10 years. If I had a house on it, they'd have foreclosed on it already. They'd have taken it from me. The only, the only reason that I can come up with is that they know it would cost money to get them up to code, so that's why they don't want them. And, which leaves us stranded, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Hollman.
Yes, ma'am.
In making any type of adjustment to it, they would also have to give their private road status if the city was to enter into any type of agreement, correct?
Right, so, I think-
You couldn't stay private and then the city go in-
Correct.
-and make any type of adjustments.
Correct. It needs to be public before we can make any improvements.
Okay, as this is a, go ahead, Mr. Getz. Well, I was, I was, Mr. Getz?
Mr. Getz. I want to make sure that, from what I heard you said, I thought I'd seen some documents in which the homeowners out there had made offers to the city to have it declared public and was willing to, and would desire actually for it to become public, right, if the city were to take it over. Do you recall seeing documents of that, Mr. Getz?
The only thing I recall is, um, one of the residents, maybe you, it was maybe six or seven years ago, had asked about, you know, what, what is the process to convey it to be a public street? And again, we talked about, the process was a little different, but it was a similar, where the neighbors would have to sign a petition and apply, and it would go through a process. But again, it was never, it was never filed with the city. And one other thing I'll mention, because it is in your staff report, and it may come up, and I should have mentioned it earlier, it looks like in 1969 and maybe 1979, something was filed at the court, at the courthouse, that basically says, "We hereby convey these streets to the public." But there's no indication that the city was participating in that at all, and, and it, and the city, and it was in, within the city at that time, so I think they got it recorded, but we have no indication that there's any, any validity to it regards to this question.
Mr. Getz?
Mark, one other point I want to make, if the city, if the city were to take over these streets and it were to become public, as well as the ditches, that does not obligate the city to go out right away or at any time and fund these improvements, although they could, but without it being taken over by the city. If it stayed private, the city could not do it, even if we had a windfall of lots of money to challenge our law. Without it being declared public, the city could not do it, definitely.
Yes, sir, that's correct. So, let's say the city council did accept it, there is no obligation for us to rush out and make any improvements. When we've had a few of these in the past, as we explained to those applicants, you know, you get added to the list of the other 800 miles of streets in the city of Beaumont. The, the only caveat to that, I would say, is, you know, given the condition of the streets and given the condition of the drainage, it is such where you might feel compelled to do something because it's in such, such a state. But that's my only caveat. But to answer your question, no, we're not, we would not be compelled to go out and make any improvements.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak for or against, they may do so. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Kevin Hackens. I'm resident of 2411 West Calder Road, previously 2499, Mr. Hollman's home. It was not until after I had already purchased property out there, the 2411 lot, that I was informed of the illegal subdivision and started learning more and more about that. A lot of stuff has been covered, Mr. Boone, great presentation. I think what I'm actually here to ask for, because I'm a realist, I know I've got a good idea of the expense that the city's looking at to take over these private roads. By the way, the private road sign I put up, simply to limit the number of people that would drive down that street at 40 miles an hour, tearing the roads up, just to get to the dead end, turn around and drive 40 miles an hour back out, I'll rip it down. Doesn't matter. I'm sure if the city would do anything for us, we'd be glad to, you know, open them up to public access. What I think I would truly like to see is if the council, in your time, I know y'all's time is very valuable, come out to our neighborhood, visit, see for yourself. There's basically two or three open lots, where they're, they're, they're not there for commercial development, they're privately owned, one by the Fasulo estate, another by another gentleman. They may have homes built on them at some point in time, they may not. I do believe that the city has an interest in this property from the standpoint that even though the city, and, and I've been told by the, the building inspectors, whenever I built my home, it's an illegal subdivision. I asked why then, if it's an illegal subdivision, is the city issuing building permits? Which he, he gave me a, a pretty cheesy answer, I thought, in the fact that, well, if you choose to build here, that's your problem, not the city's. I think by issuing building permits, the city has accepted responsibility for that property out there in developing it, collecting our taxes. At, at the, the least, please come visit, try to help us figure out how to improve the We, we can keep fixing the roads with bags of rock from Sutherland's, that's how I'm doing it right now, out of my pocket. We, we can keep fixing the roads with bags of rock from Sutherland's. That's how I'm doing it right now, out of my pocket. Mr. Holloman does it. Um, we, we just need help. And I, I appreciate anything y'all could do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Please, state your name and address, please.
My name's Anthony Fasulo. I live at twenty-four sixty-five West Calder. I've been living out there since nineteen sixty-five. And when we moved out there, those roads were as smooth as any new stretch of Interstate Ten that you'd want to be on. Of course, weather and everything else has, you know, taken its toll. The other point I want to make is there's another addition just north of us, off of West Calder. There's a street down there called Moses, one called Gerald, and I don't know, they're all people's names. Those roads were limestone roads about fifteen years ago that were in about the same shape ours was in. And city came out there and asphalted those roads back then. Now, those roads are holding up pretty doggone good, I think. I pass by there every day and see them. And when they also paved those roads, they went in there and scraped out the ditches and improved the drainage there. And my question to you is, why is that neighborhood more of an advantage than ours is to those people? In other words, I'm, I'm just kind of asking for equality here, that's all. And I'll hush and sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Fasulo. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Name and address, please, sir.
Uh, my name's, my name's, uh, James Falver. I live at twenty-four thirty-seven West Calder. And we built our house back in two thousand and three. And, uh, of course, you know, the roads were, you know, not the best, but I've been down many a roads in the south end of Beaumont that are no wider than that or blacktop that are maintained by the city and everything and, which, you know, that's, that's fine. But, you know, I had to get permits to build my house and nobody told me it was an illegal neighborhood till I called the city to come out and put the asphalt in between my driveway and the road. You know, the, in between the, the two, and that's when I found that it was illegal. So I had to go buy fifteen bags of asphalt and fill it in, and I've been buying rock. And I've even hired some people to come out there and blacktop parts of it. Of course, it don't last long, it gets tore up. But I spent probably fifteen hundred dollars last year on the road. But the thing of it is, you know, it's not our fault, the city annexed it back in the thirties or whatever, and they never came in and made it right. And there never has been, as far as I know, any type of gates denying access to anybody to drive down those roads. We have a gas main running down the road, there's electrical service, TV, telephone, all that. The only thing is the water meters are all out on West Calder, and I had to pay a bunch of money to get my, you know, water line from my house run out there. That's probably about four hundred foot. But I just would like, you know, equal representation, you know? I'm paying full taxes. I want, you know, the benefits of being a citizen. You know, it's not like we're trying to pull anything. We don't expect the street to be curved and guttered or anything like that, just come out there, patch a few hoes. And my main problem is the drainage. I don't want to get water in my house. I killed a three-foot water moxie right by my front door the other day, trying to eat up my wife's two little yorkies. And, uh, I just, you know, it's, it's bad out there. Of course, mosquitoes carry you off too, and, you know, from the water. But I've actually called the drainage district and they refuse to do anything because we're in city limits. So, I mean, it, it's not like we've tried. We've had council people out there and they all agreed that the city should do the right thing and take it over and, but, you know, when they get hit with, you know, all this government stuff. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Could you mention, just mention, is everyone's water meter on West Calder?
Yes, sir.
So there's what, ten or twelve water meters on West Calder?
Yes, sir.
And then you have to take it back to your property?
I have seven hundred and fifty feet of water line going to my house. In fact, if my water line breaks in this far yard, I'm going to have to talk him into either letting me tear up his yard, patch the PVC pipe, or spend roughly eighteen thousand dollars to have it corded off the underground board from my new, from my meter to my house.
For the record, you can go ahead and dig up my yard.
I was just asking a question because it kind of gave me a determination of where, where did they figure out it was a public street or public access when all your meters are on Calder Street?
And the city is the only ones that's really treating us like stepchildren. I mean, I have gas, natural gas in my house, he, Kevin has natural gas. We all got electricity, we're not on generators or nothing, the telephone lines all run down through there, cable TV.
Just the city facilities or-
Yeah, just the city is doing us wrong.
Yeah, well, we're not asking for, for a trash service, the trash trucks coming down our road. Please fire ambulance, yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Yeah, they do come down.
Okay.
But we're not asking, you know, trash, everybody's fine with where the trash is, taking it out to the street.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not an issue.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, any more questions for me? Uh, any more questions for me or anything?
I don't, I don't think so.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. Oh, we got another one. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I am. Uh, my name is Catherine Falver. I'm, I live at twenty-four thirty-seven West Calder. Uh, I just want to say that I did talk to a gentleman from the city. He came out and we walked up and down the streets and we talked, and I've lived out there all my life. I lived, I grew up in the next block. Um, those streets have been out there and they've looked like that most of my life. My one concern is that when it rains, our backyard floods. Yes, we built up, uh, enough to where we won't flood, but we've got our neighbors across the street and, uh, one of the elderly la- ladies, uh, water will come in her house one day. Um, the other problem next to our house is a vacant lot, and the gentleman came in and he built it up so far that I literally have a lake in my backyard, and we've had to dig trenches to make sure the water gets drained. Luckily, we don't have the water, we're closer up to West Calder, so we don't have, our water drains pretty well. But if you go to the back, those di- water in the ditches is what you see for at least two months after it rains. It never drains. So it's a health hazard, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Boone.
Do you know in this area of Beaumont was annexed?
It was, we believe nineteen fifty-seven. We believe it was platted in nineteen twenty-five and annexed in nineteen fifty-seven.
When was this subdivision platted?
Nineteen twenty-five.
So what would have been the reasoning behind not taking over this section?
It was private at the time of annexation and remained private after.
Everything that's out there would have been private then?
I don't believe, I, I don't know. Well, I don't know. Again, this is just a small, um, this was nineteen thirty-eight.
Could you please come to the microphone? Could you please come forward? State your name, please.
To my knowledge, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in the address, please. Twenty-four fifteen West Calder Road.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of that addition, uh, for fifty-five years. And I was told that, uh, Humble Oil Company, and they were still in that pumping station when I built my home there, was down, uh, south, okay, just a little bit south. And that property was initially their, uh, employees' homes were in there. It was like a, the, you know, you hear about the, the company housing and the company store, okay? That's basically what that was. And a lot of the areas still, I have a large area in my lawn that will not ever keep grass growing because it has shell under it and the shell burns the grass up, okay? Anyway, that's how that addition was originally developed. And when, uh, someone else, after they, uh, Humble Oil got rid of their housing project, someone else purchased that property, and I don't know who that was. But it was, um, when Humble Oil had it, they had, to my, to what I've been told, they hired a, um, person from Japan, a Japanese planter. And he came over and planted oak trees beautifully placed all up and down the property. With some of my friends driving that driveway that has private street, they awe as to how gorgeous the landscaping is.
Okay, but we think that this was originally tied to the Humble Oil, like a, like a camp.
Then, for some reason, I think the West Calder Fig Acres came into it being Fig Acres, I don't know. Anyway.
I think that answers the question we had, I believe.
Okay, uh, I would like to talk, uh, as a, a property owner there, okay?
Sure, but we get the drainage, so you can skip that one and go on.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yes, but we understand the drainage is a problem, so skip that one and go on from there, if you would.
Okay, um, well, what I would like to know is, um, what can be done, and we've all discussed that. But I was twenty-five years old when I secured that property, okay? And when my husband and I were able to, uh, get the property and get, uh, establish with the builder, and the builder went down and got the, uh, permit, why weren't we titled at that time? If the laws or rules of the planning d- division or the city of Beaumont, why weren't we advised that that was an illegal addition? I only found this out probably three years ago, and I've been living out there fifty-five years. Were there not these rules in effect at the time my home was built? That the, that the city had these certain, uh, codes and everything that had to be followed? If they were not in effect, then why am I being penalized and not, I can't get any services for the mo- tax money I paid for fifty-five years? Where's that tax money going? It's not going to help us.
Mr. Boone has the only response to that.
So just, um, a couple of quick thoughts is, as you can see, and as you mentioned, it looks like maybe this was housing for Humble Oil employees, perhaps. Um, so a couple of things. One, with these being platted lots in the nineteen twenties, they were, they would be to some extent grandfathered because they were platted prior to us ever having a planning commission. And then, as I mentioned, it was annexed in the nineteen fifties. It had housing on it. And so again, it's, for my zoning ordinance, if you had a home on the property, um, it can, you can always put a home back because essentially it's grandfathered. So you have those rights, um, although you, although the streets aren't public, you have the right to build and rebuild on that property. But again, it's, it's kind of buyer beware. And I think you, you answered our question. It sounds like this was a Humble Oil or some oil field. Again, if you zoom out, it's oil field. It looked like a lot, a lot of drilling was out there. And then again, we saw this area, and it, it's the only thing that was developed out there. Okay, I'm sorry. The only thing that was developed out there was this little piece, these housing, this housing right here. That was the only thing that was in this immediate area, other than oil wells that we could see. So I think it answers the question as to how that got there.
Okay, okay, well, once we know how that got there, then why was it, weren't we as homeowners, builder of building houses, buying property, why weren't we told about these issues that we were building in an il- illegal addition?
Ma'am, I don't think that, ma'am, I don't think that's something that we can, that issue is something we can address today.
I'm sorry.
That's not really something we, this body can address today, and we've about reached your, reached your time.
But, um, I would just like to, to be able to understand, uh, why we're paying taxes on a property that is lea- is illegal, uh, that our homes are on. What's happening with our tax money? We're not getting any benefit from it. Thank you.
I understand, thank you.
I- if I might, Madam Chair, there's nothing illegal about building houses where the streets are private. We have other subdivisions in town where we, where we have private streets.
I was going to ask you that, I just hadn't made it there yet.
Yes, I mean, and the picture earlier, I mean, it's just like your driveway. That's a driveway into that subdivision. And developers choose, in some instances, to have private driveways where they can gate off the community and not have public access. There's nothing illegal about that. They've just reached the point where they want to turn it over to the city for city, for city maintenance because it's too expensive to maintain, basically.
Okay, no. Uh, no, no, I'm sorry, the public hearing is, is-
Close.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else, so we're going to go and close the public hearing. Uh, we can have, we, the board can have discussion. Um, I was going to make a comment that in the, over a decade I've been on this board, we've had several of these. And I think the concern, correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, I think the concern is you don't want people just going around saying, "Oh, I want to be private," and then as soon as it's inconvenient, turning it over to the city. I think this case, being as old as it is, maybe is a little bit different of a situation than some of the more modern private subdivisions we've had, so that may be something we want to think about and how we address it.
I have a comment, too.
Sure.
It is very expensive, and, uh, as commissioners, we cannot take, take a decision. So, uh, uh, City Council, uh, Council have to decide, uh, in the next meeting maybe, uh, what to do about this. Uh, uh, as far as, uh,
Right, and I truly, I hear you loud and clear, and looking at the pictures and of course the flood concerns. I, I do believe that every citizen of Beaumont deserves a, a good quality of life. And hearing the stories about how old this subdivision is and the history behind it, and some of the misconceptions and information, it's just as old and crumbly as the roads are today. Um, so I would like to make a motion, uh, on PZ twenty twenty-one two forty-three to, uh, send it back to Public Works to consider other alternatives, um, on how to move forward with, um, this issue that the citizens there are facing. I, I do believe that it at least deserves an opportunity to present an alternative, um, before moving forward with, uh, making a final decision before we send it over to City Council.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on the board?
No.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Chris? Twenty twenty-one two eighty-four, please.
Yes. Okay, uh, PZ twenty twenty-one two eighty-four is to consider a request for a rezoning of a portion of the property, uh, that is RS Residential Single Family to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling Two, uh, with a specific use permit to allow, to allow a convenience store, restaurant, and gas station for the property at forty fifty Magnolia Avenue.
We're following you, go ahead.
Okay. George Charlton is requesting a rezoning of this property to allow a convenience store and gas station. Uh, the proposed building would be approximately six thousand square feet. A half would be occupied by a convenience store with deli, um, and be open from seven AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and seven AM to midnight, Friday and Saturday. Uh, the other half would potentially be occupied by a res- restaurant. Uh, let's see, and again, let me just show you on the screen in front of you. This is Magnolia, of course, and you'll see that the property along Magnolia, most of Magnolia is zone GCMD, General Commer- Commercial, uh, Multifamily. So this is, as you think of restaurant, retail, multifamily, uh, here, the issue we've got is they want to develop a convenience store, restaurant on, uh, the entire property, which spills over into, uh, this single-family property, uh, behind there. And let me go ahead and see, and again, you can see this is the Pump Island- And let me go ahead and see, and again, you can see this is the Pump Island, uh this is the C Store, Convenience Store. And again, this, this zoning is, is all acceptable here along Magnolia, the question is the RS to the rear, along La Salle Street. And then, let's see. One thing we'll talk about in just a second, this green line is a sewer uh line, so we need to talk about that in just a second. Let me show you the uh, some photographs of the area, this is the subject property along Magnolia uh to the south, this is a view to the southwest, a view to the west, the north, also to the north. Okay. One thing, Adina, can you turn it back to the site plan, please? One thing I'll go ahead and mention on, for the benefit of the applicant is that no landscaping is shown on the proposed site plan. Uh, eight-foot wooden privacy fence or ten-foot wide landscape buffer will be required along the east and south lo- property lines because it debuts residential zoning property. Also along Magnolia and uh the frontage along La Salle would require a six-foot wide uh park, uh landscaping area. Um, so just wanted to mention that for the benefit of the uh, the applicant. And again, based on um, you can see here to the south, uh this property uh is zoned GCMD to the same line. And so based on this proposal, staff is recommending approval, uh, subject to the following conditions. Number one, landscaping uh is required to meet the city ordinances. Number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. That's the fats, oils, and grease program. And then finally, number three, no permanent structures allowed to be constructed on top of the sanitary sewer easement. That's that uh green line I showed you earlier, so they may need to move the building back a little bit if approved. So we did send out notifications to twenty property owners, we've received one in favor. We did receive one in opposition. Uh, this is from Patricia Bradley Johnson. And she states, I'm not in favor because I think we have enough convenience stores on Magnolia, and one gas station is uh plenty for the area, so that was one in opposition. But again, based on the application, we are, staff is recommending approval subject to those three conditions. Uh, with that, are there any questions of staff?
Are they planning to access this property from La Salle or will they use it from Magnolia?
So they are proposing one access point to La Salle.
There's one on La Salle.
Yeah, right here.
Any other questions for Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is the applicant in the audience? Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Uh, my name is Rahil Meridia. Uh, the address is forty-five nineteen Sterling Woodway, Houston, Texas. I am on behalf of Mr. Drawl, uh, Mr. George Charlton, and the address in question is four zero five zero Magnolia. It is actually the intersection of Magnolia and La Salle Street, as you can see up there. One thing I would like to point out is, in terms of right-of-way and entries, uh, there is a proposed entry based off of uh Magnolia, I'm not sure if it's, uh, it might be visible. Um, and based on the um, the uh conditions that the planning department has put in forth regarding the uh sanitary sewer easement, uh, the only option for the development of this property would be to convert the the, the areas of the property that are currently stated as residential to commercial or general, commercial or general usage because we have to set back the building further back uh because of the sanitary sewer easement that's on the property at the moment. And to answer a question for one of the comments that the lady had left, Ms. Patricia, if I'm not mistaken, uh, yes, there are a few gas stations, however, they, some of them, the current gas stations and fuel stations that are in the area are in some decrepit conditions and/or based on flooding that happens periodically. Uh, and the general lack of maintenance uh allows for just product that's not safe for cars and for residents. Uh, and there are other developments that we would like to bring in potentially, possibly with a restaurant and a gas station. It would potentially be a uh washetaria service as well, that would allow the local residents to use that service. That's all I had to cover, thank you.
Any questions for the gentleman?
No.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Mr. Getz, yes?
In that area of town, we hear quite some kind of about it being considered to be a food desert because of the lack of grocery stores.
Absolutely.
Anywhere in that area. And that you, you might be planning some fast food.
That's, that's correct. Uh, there is going to be a fast food restaurant component built into that as well. Along with that, we'll have a separate entity that will be a uh, as pointed out by Mr. Boone, that we have lease spaces that would be available for restaurants and/or washetaria to come in.
Is there any opportunity that you can see that your store would be able to provide produce uh to the public? For example, eggs, lettuce?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, one, one of the things we like to do in our businesses is to apply for uh vig and food stamp, uh, like the ability to accept those. And one of their recommend, one of their, uh, one of the conditions that come with that is you have to supply uh eggs, uh, bread, uh, like certain perishable food items that you have to carry, uh, milk and such. Uh, and we do like to, we do understand the, when we see the area and, and the lack of development, um, there is some, but there is still a lack, and you notice the food, yes, absolutely, it's there, and we like to do something about it. And uh, we have a v- limited experience, but experience nonetheless, uh, developing properties in Houston, um, like Makala area neighborhoods, uh, and with similar situations where it used to be a food desert, and our goal is to bring in some services along with food prop, like restaurants, basically. You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, we'll let you come forward in a minute.
Yeah, that's the councilman.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you because you, you mask on.
But then, is it gonna be a shopping strip with the gas station?
Uh, yes, i- it, it will be a shopping strip, but the idea is to have a separate building for the convenience store altogether. And uh, the other, depending on how much space we have and how much we can, based on parking lot restrictions and other restrictions the planning department might have, we will determine how so, how large the um secondary building might be with other, with tenants uh that we would have whenever they apply for it and such.
So, as of right now, you're not completely sure how many additional leasing spaces you'll have? Or is it gonna be like the convenience store, maybe four spaces, or you're not sure, you haven't had that for?
That, yes and no, because yes, the convenience store is gonna be there, but it just depends based on what the remaining s- square footage is. So if we have remaining three thousand square footage perhaps, and we want to divide it up into maybe two, uh, two businesses, uh, or let's say we get a business that wants to lease the entire space, then we could just do that. Uh, obviously, they would have to apply with the um, with the city for specific use permit and whatever permits that they might have to apply for to make sure that, that would be applicable.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry, my apologies, Mr. Turner. Mr. Samuel?
Yes, what would happen uh on the La Salle side? Will you put culverts in, uh, or is that gonna be open ditch or?
It, whatever the city planning department would, I, I presume, based on my experience developing properties in other municipalities, it's whatever the local municipality or the, the governing agency dictates. If they want us to do open ditches, then we would have open ditches. Or if they want us to go ahead and seal it with culverts and landscape above it, that's something we would do. I feel like that's something that would be addressed later on in the, the planning and development process, once we have applied. And I know the property has a lack of landscaping on there, but just to say there will be landscaping that we will be following based on the recommendation by the planning department of City of Beaumont.
So you do understand that the um, the uh three conditions, including the landscaping and fencing?
Clearly, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
I do have one question.
Why don't you buzz it?
Do you have another project in Beaumont?
Uh, no, sir.
Uh, what about other, you said you have one in Houston?
Yeah, well, City of Houston, yes, we have just concluded a project. Uh, we are also starting a project in City of Sugarland. Uh, it's in a, uh, it's, it's in the, it's shopping center, general uh restaurant type development. It's a twelve, ten to twelve thousand square feet development. Um, we're taking, we're accepting bids from contractors currently for that project, but we haven't started.
But you do understand Councilman Getz was asking you a question about, in this area, this is a north Beaumont, you, you can do better with a super, like you have a Perdu's, Meat Marky's.
Of course.
All of that, is a lack of in that area.
Yeah.
So you may want to think about, while you're building it, you may want to build the whole thing as a superit rather than C Store.
Of course, and, and thank you so much, I uh, I, I really appreciate your feedback on that, and, and we definitely, I think our main goal is to provide a, based on the area, a s- a grocery store type of a product. And what I mean by that is residents, residences should be able to get their basic supplies. I am not saying that we're going to bring in a brand-new HEB or a Kroger or anything like that, no. But their essential services should be there. Uh, and obviously, this, it's a challenge, we have to play based on square footage, and uh, other services that we would like to essentially bring in just to enhance the experience for the residences. But yes, to answer your question, our number one concern would be to see if we can maximize it, and if we have to sacrifice our tenant space to increase the space, to turn it into a, a, a bigger grocery store and provide more products, then yes, that is something we would be looking into, absolutely. And I think that we would do that while we are in the planning and development phases with the City of Beaumont.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Oh, yes.
I have a question. Councilor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Do you have any plans to operate a gang in the area?
Uh, no, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone that'd like to do it for or against this case? Alright, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Uh, council, any further question or discussion? Board?
No, motion to approve twenty twenty-one two eighty-four with the conditions.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries?
Yes, aye.
Uh, Chris, case twenty twenty-one three oh four, please?
Okay, file PZ twenty twenty-one dash three oh four is to consider a request for a revised specific use permit to allow a new driveway in a GCMD to General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District um, for the property at six twenty-two uh West Lucas. Given the multural, multiple applications and site plans approved at this site, I'm gonna attempt to go through the history, and it's, it's a little detailed, uh, but I want to share, share that with you, um, given the fact that um, there's been a lot of concern on this, uh, about this site, and I just want to give you the full history so that you have that. So back in um, February of two thousand eleven, uh, Darlene Hannah was approved for a revised specific use permit at this location. And I'm gonna go ahead and, and show you that site plan. Uh, but before I do, I want to show you, this is the site plant, site in question, outlined in red. You're familiar with Calder to the south, West Lucas uh to the west. Um, and this is a rather current, this is a current aerial photograph, so you can see uh, there's this residential drive here. Uh, and we believe that this originally was West Lucas, and then it was straightened out um, with this project, and so this pr- this area was um, kind of left over for development. And so here's this uh portion of West Lucas Drive here. Uh, you'll notice there is a driveway, we'll talk about that in just a second. And then there's another portion of West Lucas down here, you'll notice there's a driveway here, but this is fenced off and closed. Okay. This is the same current view. Okay, so in February of two thousand eleven, Darlene Hannah was approved for a revised specific use permit at this location. And this before you is the two thousand and eleven application. And you can see there were no curb cut requests to either segment of uh this section of West Lucas. But there was a circulation pattern around the building. In two thousand sixteen, a driveway was poured for Quenches. Um, I will note without planning, without approval from the planning uh division. So you'll see, this is back in two thousand fourteen during construction. So after the two thousand eleven, but before this driveway was poured. Two thousand fifteen during construction, and then you'll see, this is two thousand seventeen. So the site's developed mostly here, but with the additional drive. Okay, in December twenty twenty, plans were submitted for preliminary review of the interior buildout of a cookie shop. That's the one in question, the cookie shop is one of the tenant spaces here. Okay, but the plans that were submitted do not reflect any additional driveways or curb cuts to the street to the east. The plans for the cookie shop were approved but conditioned as quote interior-only SUP two thousand eleven. Again, a s- a s- specific use permit is site plan specific, so it's got to follow the site plan, in this case, two thousand eleven, which did not show any driveways to the east, okay? In February twenty twenty-one, uh, plans for a new driveway were submitted to the engineering staff for design review. Um, the plans received a favorable review from engineering, but were never reviewed uh by planning or building codes, and no permit was ever issued for its construction. And that request was for a driveway down here to the south. Later in February twenty twenty-one, the plans for the cookie shop were formally submitted with a permit application for construction with no indication of a new drive, curb cut, or drive-through included in the permit request. And the plans submitted with the permit application were reviewed and approved by all departments, but with the condition that the work for the cookie shop would be interior-only due to the SUP being site plan specific going back to two thousand and eleven. Uh, this information was also verbally conveyed to the applicant, again, restating that the site was limited to the two thousand and eleven site plan. In July this year, the applicant was completing the buildout of a new, of the cookie company uh when he submitted plans for an additional driveway onto the north cul-de-sac behind the building for a new drive-through window. Uh, this permit for the new curb cut was dis- denied as it was shown, not shown rather, on the twenty eleven SUP site plan. The applicant then appl- applied for an amended two thousand, an amendment to the two thousand eleven SUP to request approval of the new second driveway along with the Quenches driveway. And let me show you this, so this is, you, many of y'all recall, this is the August twenty twenty-one request for a site plan showing the existing Quenches driveway. And again, Quenches is a snow cone shop here, and the traffic essentially stacks here along east, uh, West Lucas, comes through this driveway, the pickup window, and out. And so in conjunction with the cookie company in August twenty twenty-one, the revised specific use permit for this site plan was submitted with an additional driveway to service the cookie company uh with an additional access point to this street. So that was what was approved, or excuse me, reviewed in August of two thousand twenty-one. Um, and basically, wh- what ended up happening is the city council approved the rem- the retention of this curb cut uh for service Quenche and the shopping center, but denied an additional curb cut uh to this segment of Lucas. And so that's where it stood at the end of August. Uh, the applicant is now requesting an amendment to the August twenty twenty-one specific use permit to reconfigure the interior parking and access drives, and to build a driveway that will circle around the rear of the building. Let me go ahead and show you. Providing access to a new drive-through window here. Should be noted, no new curb cut to the residential street to. Should be noted, no new curb cut to the residential street to the east is proposed, but will rather utilize the existing curb cut up to the north, which is in conjunction with Quinchi's. So what is before you today is a request to add this driveway here behind the building. And again, the, you can see the circulation pattern would be in a counterclockwise, uh, motion, going behind the building, accessing the cookie, uh, window here, uh, going through and then, uh, probably exiting, uh, in a counterclockwise motion here. So no additional curb cut, but an additional drive. Again, a site plans, SUPs are site plan specific, that's why it's coming back to you today. We did ask the engineering, uh, traffic group to take a look at, um, what was proposed as part of this application. And it's a little tough to read, maybe easier to read in your packet. Uh, but the comments are the existing, um, pavement. I'm gonna start with the top comment. The existing pavement, uh, to be painted in a manner to discourage Quinchi's customers from blocking the exit of the proposed drive-through. The second comment in blue, uh, proposed stop sign facing the south with additional sign prohibiting right turns. The next comment here is proposed asphalt drive-through, uh, ten feet by one hundred. And then the final comment in blue is, uh, direction of traffic flow for the proposed drive-through not representative of proposed pavement markings. So it sounds like they wanna make sure that the pavement markings match the, uh, proposed traffic flow. Let me go ahead and show you, um, some photographs of the subject property. Again, the cookie company, I believe is going here, it's the second tenant space there. Quinchi's being here on the end. Okay, so this is a view to the east and the proposed idea is to wrap the driveway around between, well, this end of the, uh, building going back behind. Here's the view looking north, so if you were coming along, uh, the, the cookie window's gonna be here. This would be a view to the south. Uh, so again, here's the sign, I think the sign's already been, uh, put up for the cookies. Uh, so the idea is the driveway would go here along the rear of the building. And would go in this direction and again, uh, merge with traffic here and exit that way. Again, the traffic engineer is recommending no right turn here. This is a view to the southwest. View to the west. Northwest. North. Northeast. East. And I will note that we have sent sixteen notices to area property owners. We've received one in favor. And we have received three in opposition. Uh, four total, four total in opposition. Let me read you, um, some of these. One is from Eugenia LLC of twenty-nine twenty Tacoa Road. It's fairly long, so I'll try to summarize. Just strongly oppose the request. I own most of the property on West Lucas that faces the back of the commercial building. The requested drive-through relocation would increase the noise from both vehicles in line and ordering at the drive-through window. In addition, how the proposed driveway would intersect with the current Quinchi's drive-through would re- would represent a problem as an additional car will have to wait on the street to allow for cars to cross Quinchi's drive-through lane. Cars waiting in line for Winch- Quinchi's is already a problem for our residential street. And if approved, the new drive-through on the commercial property will only make it worse. Let's see. These are from the same owner, different properties. Uh, here's one from a Manuel Ramirez at six nine eight West Lucas. And he is opposed, just saying, I think it will increase the traffic next to the cul-de-sac. And here is one from the Preji Family Limited. I think this would cause a lot of congestion and confusion of traffic flow. And then again, I mentioned, there's one in favor, Kathy Dawn of fifty-one forty-five Browning, uh, just saying, please allow the added drive, this area is too congested, congested without it. And then there was, yeah, one from, uh, Sahela Najad. I think they own properties in the area, they're appro- opposed to the new drive application. There's already two illegal drives to this property and allowing, this drive will create large traffic at Daddy O's Drive and an already, uh, traffic jam at Quinchi's. So those are the, kind of the summary of the comments. And Adina, if you can go back to the proposed site plan, please. So again, what is being proposed is not an additional curb cut, uh, but is again, an additional drive-through. Engineering has provided those comments, again, trying to mitigate any, uh, any conflict within the site or any conflict spilling out off of the site onto the road. So based on that, staff is recommending approval of this amended specific use permit with the following conditions. Uh, number one, the driveway for the drive-through must be one-way only and parking lot should be marked, uh, with one-way, uh, arrows. Number two, uh, pavement at the intersection of the two drive, two drives should be marked and signed to discourage the blocking of traffic coming from the new driveway. And then, number three, driveway shall be a minimum of ten foot in width. And we would like to add the, uh, one caveat to that is there is some question as to whether or not, what are the exact dimensions of the site plan as it relates to the property line? So we would amend, uh, comment three to say driveway shall be a minimum of ten feet in width and that it be, that that plan be surveyed by a licensed survey so that we can confirm that. Uh, but with that, are there any questions of staff?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Um, coming to the backside of that building?
Yes.
And you said you're gonna put a driveway on the back, ten feet. Is there a line between the building and the driveway, a offset line or footage? Or can it be right next to the building?
So there's no setback, there's no driveway setback from the building required. Our, and as mentioned, we do wanna make sure that it's at least ten feet wide, the driveway. Uh, and there's not a setback from the property line to the east. We just wanna make sure the driveway is not on the property line. Uh, or at least, we don't, we wanna make sure it's not in the city right away. So, uh, to answer your question, it can be right up against the building. Uh, and it, and it can be right on the property line, it just can't be over the property line.
And then you have the street behind it with the cul-de-sac. Will it interfere with the cul-de-sac setup?
We don't believe so. Again, it's, if you can imagine the car is driving around this direction, lining up with the building, u- utilizing the, uh, the takeout window here. This, you know, there's no access here, there's no sidewalk, I don't believe. And so it's a pretty good distance between the drive and the pavement edge, which is, which is over here. So I don't believe there's any, there would be any conflict between these two.
The, there's a residence on the, uh, east side of that street?
Yes, sir.
The four complaints, was that from those residents?
Some of them were, yes. I think the, uh, the first one I read, I think they owned.
She owned like three, three houses.
Yeah. Yeah, the Eugenia LLC twenty-nine twenty Tacoa, those houses, several, I think, sounds like two or three houses on the east side, she owns them.
So those are rental properties?
I believe some are all, yes.
Are there any utilities, uh, in the back?
So, let's see. Maybe go to the photographs, please. Well, maybe the photographs, the, the, from the ground, other, other direction, please. Yep, yep, so, yeah. So in terms of utilities, public utilities, um, I don't know that we have that in the, shown in the site plan. But again, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for a s- a licensed survey, uh, to make sure that there's not an issue. But I would expect that there are, it's not an issue. I mean, you can see their private connections to the electrical system here, but, um.
It's going to be a problem when they're going to, um, make a pavement there. Uh, yeah, they have to make sure what are, what utilities are there.
Correct, correct. And again, that'll be done as part of the review of the permit, yes.
Yeah, Chris, when we looked at it last time, so making a drive, driveway now going straight, does that have enough setback there from the city right away?
So there's no setback required for a driveway, just the s- the building. But again, if you look at the site plan, you can see between the, uh, you know, the edge of the building and the, you can see the edge of the cul-de-sac there, it is fairly close. Uh, but to answer your question, there's not a setback for the driveway. But, um, we, again, we wanna have that survey to make sure that the driveway is wide enough and not on city property.
And traffic doesn't think this is gonna cause a backup on that section of West Lucas headed toward Quinchi's? Cause if I recall correctly when we, sorry, if I recall correctly when we, um, originally approved this, traffic was the concern at that time. Now that you have two drive-through windows, is traffic concerned that it's gonna back up?
So again, I, I think that their, their, their feeling is that with the mitigation efforts of the painting and the signage, the idea is that as long as the Quinchi's customers allow passage by the cookie customers, it shouldn't create any additional backup on the street. Because again, the stacking, the stacking of these cars for the cookie company is gonna be all within their property. So it should not interfere, interfere with West Lucas. The only concern, I think from their point of view and ours, was that if, um, you know, if, if Quinchi's customers lined up as they're going west, the worst case is gonna block cookie customers from going north, which is not gonna cause a problem for the street. If it were the other way around, then I think there'd be more concern. So I think, again, the comments from traffic was a way to mitigate that within the site.
Thank you. Okay, is that all for Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gitz. Mr. Gitz has a question.
Chris, so can you go to the slide and just show the post traffic pattern?
Yes. So I think, yeah, I think the idea would be is if you, if you wanted to go to get a cookie through the drive-through, you could come in off West Lucas, come around the building and then get in line here to go get your cookie here, go up here, and again.
Back off of West Quinchi's.
Yes, because, well, and again, right. Right.
You can't access that south part of the parking lot from the front to, um.
Oh, okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
You have to go through the south, most southern driveway.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
It causes the parking in the way it's, it, there's like a curb across there.
Okay, so one clarification, yeah, you have to not, can't, don't come in this curb cut, but come in this curb cut. So you'd come down and then you'd get in line here, thank you. So again, eh, the idea behind traffic with these comments is to try to mitigate the conflict here. But again, if there is conflict because Quinchi's is blocking this, it's gonna back up in their property, not over here.
On the street.
But the hope we have is that all the citizens are going to obey the signage, be polite, and make room for each other, and this is gonna work like clockwork. And I have found it working since.
Just like on College Street at Chick-fil-A, that's, yeah.
Well, I have one concern, all the people that come to the Quinchi's is, is with the kids. So they're gonna be coming, you know, like crossing each other, like Councilman would say, that, that concerns me.
Chris?
Yeah, and again, eh, so, and again, just so, yeah, so they've, they've already got their cookies here, right? So they're, they're wanting to leave. Now, they could be blocked in, again, and that may slow the cookie pickup situation. But it shouldn't in any way delay Quinchi's traffic, because, yeah. So it, anyway, eh, we're just thinking, it may delay the cookies, but not the Quinchi's. That's our thought.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir.
I know the app that is in the audience, if we run into a situation where it is congested like that, like kinda similar to Chick-fil-A, is it possible that maybe a staff person can be out there kinda helping directly?
If we could, Mr. Turner, if we could wait and let him come up and address those issues, that'd be great.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
The individuals that complained the last time we were here, are they complaining now about the traffic?
Yes, sir. So we had some opposition, my recollection is, is from the same, same individuals, yes.
Okay.
To the east and, uh, south and to the, to the west.
Alright, we're good now? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, and if the applicant could come forward and state your name and address, please, and then you may address Mr. Turner's concern, if you would.
Yes, my name's Brian Donegan at nineteen ten Twenty-first Street, Beaumont, Texas. And the first time we come in, I understand what they were trying to say, we couldn't go into the residential area. Now, all the traffic that's from my cookie company will be on my property, it does not affect the city in any way. We're talking about crossing. Every business in Beaumont, Texas has a crossing. People, you, you let this car go, the next car go. If we have a stop sign, the people stop, one car goes out. We open Friday and it takes approximately three minutes to get somebody's order ready. So by the time, every car would leave out every three minutes. But all the congestion would be in my, it would be my problem, wouldn't have anything to do with the city. It don't affect any, any backup, like I said, well, it'll go Chick-fil-A on College Street, the new ones there. They're backed up on the feeder road. So eh, everywhere there's congestion, you know, everywhere there's a crossway. So whatever affects on my property shouldn't affect the City of Beaumont. But like, what was your question asking me?
Uh, kinda at Chick-fil-A, even though it's congestion, they have like employees kinda outside, kinda helping with the flow of traffic.
Well, they got people outside taking orders, they don't have people out there directing traffic. I mean, you wouldn't wanna put somebody out there that wasn't a security guard to have. Someone come up to him and say, I need you to move your car. No, you're not a law enforcement, so you can't make somebody move their car, but that's not a law enforcement. But everywhere in the City of Beaumont, there's a crossing.
Could you, could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Lowes parking lot, you know, it's everywhere there's crossings. All this does, like I said, and in the two thousand eleven, we already got approved for this circle on there. We just did not pour it until la- two thousand eleven. We just waited, you know, until the building's re- rented out. And if we needed it, it was already approved, am I correct? With the circle?
It was not approved like this.
Okay, it wasn't approved, approved with the, the Quinchi's, the Quinchi's drive, is that correct? In two thousand eleven?
Okay.
No, back on, keep going.
So this is two thousand eleven, so again, you showed, showed the arrows back then, but you didn't show Quinchi's driveway, you didn't show the driveway proposed back in August and then the driveway to the south.
In two thousand eleven, we got approved on this. Quinchi's, when we leased the building out to Quinchi's, they came to planning and zoning, got a permit to put a driveway in. Now, it did not go in front of y'all, but it went in front of engineering. Engineering gave them a, gave them a, a permit to pour it. That, that's all we knew about it. We didn't know, we, we didn't drop the ball on where it was supposed to go, if it was supposed to go in front of y'all. They poured the driveway, they came out and inspected the driveway, and that was the last we heard of it. So the only thing, you know, it's what you call upgrades, you know, when people upgrade, then they put the driveway in. We did not put the driveway in, Quinchi's put the driveway in. But we were already approved for the circle to go around the building in two thousand eleven. We just did not pour that at the time, two reasons. We built that out of pocket budget. So why pour it, put the, the back drive in if no one was gonna use it? Well, now that we opened this business up, well, now we're gonna use it. But we already were approved for it. We just was not approved for the driveway when we additionally done this. We were approved for what you see, then Quinchi's came in and got, cause we told them, if you wanna put a driveway, you go to the city and you deal with the city. So that's what they did. Now, just because it didn't go in front of planning and zoning, they still got a permit. Now, just because it didn't go in front of planning and zoning, they still got a permit. They still got a permit to put it in. It just wasn't, I mean, it, I understand, I've been, I'm in the construction building. Sometimes things fall through the loopholes. But that ain't, that, that, why is that stopping me from putting in what was already approved in two thousand eleven? All the traffic's gonna be on my property. It don't affect the city. I'm not cutting the curb out. I'm not affecting the rent houses in the back of us. That's all that is, is behind us are rent houses. And that, so it's not affecting them in any way. And that's the only one that's complaining about it. Any questions for me? Because I met, when I met with three or four different officials with the city of Beaumont, and they came out and looked at it. There is a proper, enough distance between the curb, as you were asking. There's twenty-six feet from the back of my building to the cul-de-sac. Like I said, I'll give a survey. But this, what, what the drawing that is, that is a survey by Fitz and Shipman, is what the drawing is on. Is it?
Except what you're asking for now, your current request is slightly different from this two thousand eleven approved plan, because it comes in one curb cut lower and goes through that other parking lot. So it's a little bit different.
The only, there's no, there's no difference in the circle, in the circle of the, what they're gonna go clock, counterclockwise. The only thing that's different is the Quinches driveway is the only thing that's different from the original plans. This is not gonna, I'm not even gonna lose one parking spot from where this is drawn up. He, Mr. Boone, I mean, Boone come out and looked at it, when, and Mr., uh, Boyd walked out there with me, on site. All I wanna do is open my business up, and I designed this just as a drive-through. That's all I wanted to do. And then I just keep, it's, it's every month something's different comes up. I'm just asking y'all for, for let me run my business. I'm not affecting the city of Beaumont. I'm actually gonna help the city of Beaumont. We opened up Friday, and we did over a thousand customers to, up to today. So I just tell you how this is gonna improve, you know?
So your customers have the ability to walk in or drive in?
They walk in the front. It was not designed for that, but we had to, we had to, to do something different. I'm fifty thousand dollars into this building right here. I had to do something different. So we made it to where they could come in, order their cookies, and go back. There's no seating in the building. But I'm just, that's what I did. I mean, I did a thousand customers this week.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any more questions for gentlemen?
No.
All right. This is a public hearing, so anyone wanna speak for or against? Any questions from counsel? Please state your name and address.
My name's U. Chania Coffin, and I live at thirty-nine ninety-nine North Street. The comments on the, the Mr. Boone read were mine. He didn't read all of them. I know they were lengthy. I hope y'all looked at them. The applicant keeps talking about this, the effect on the city. I don't think it probably has that much effect on the city. It does have an effect on the property I own. And if you have that picture of the original, the property lines, I own four and a half lots. Well, that shows it too. There. I own the, Mr. Ramirez owns the house on the, the top lot, oops. He owns the top lot. It's not a rent house. He lives there. It's on a lot and a half. I own the next, where the pool is. That's Mr. Ramirez's house. I don't know if he's here today or not. But I own the next lot is a vacant lot. The next house has a duplex on it. The next house has a residence on it, and I'm in the process of buying the next, the next piece of property. I've improved all of these properties. They are rental properties, but they're, they're being managed by American Real Estate. I've put a lot of money in this. I think the, in my comments, I said, you know, I have a feeling y'all are gonna approve this. So I, I would certainly like to have some buffer for the noise, the lights. Not just the vehicles, but, I mean, all those properties look out, that I own, look out on the back of this commercial property. Put up a fence, require landscaping, make 'em maintain it. You know, you don't wanna look out your living room window, whether you're renting or not renting. If you're paying twelve hundred dollars a month for a, a one-bedroom unit, you know, you still don't wanna look out at cars, you know, ordering cookies all night long. I don't know what the hours of operation are on this. Lights a factor. Once it's, you know, it's five o'clock here, when daylight saving times changes, all the car lights are gonna be on. It's just, there's, there's nothing, even though, uh, uh, planning and, you know, the, the staff has recommended approval of this. I think there has to be some, and the survey, I appreciate that, because I think there needs to be some buffer. This is a residential street. It was not always, that, as Mr. Boone pointed out, that property was carved out when Lucas changed. That was many, many years ago. But this was a neighborhood. This was a residential property, you know, it, it was a neighborhood. It was never meant to have the back of a commercial building face these, these properties. And I, I just have a real, I have a real problem with this. In addition, you know, he did go through the history of how this all happened. And, you know, evidently someone dropped the ball on the Quinches driveway, and, you know, y'all approved that. And that, that was probably a good, you know, I mean, a, a good fix to that. But the applicant has, you know, you got a, a drive-through sign up. Y'all haven't approved a driveway for the drive-through yet. Yes, he's spending money on stuff that, he has a drive-through window, he has a drive-through sign. Is that gonna be a lit sign? Is, you know, is, are my tenants gonna look out on a neon flashing drive-through menu? I don't know. But there needs to be some buffer between that commercial property and my properties that I've invested a lot of money in.
Thank you. Mr. Getz?
My question's for Chris. Chris, was the commercial property considered to be built? Why was there not any permit, the fence be put along the backside to screen off the back of that property from the neighbors who had their front doors facing?
I was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, so, A, when we talk about fences, that is part of the landscaping ordinance. And those fences are only required when a commercial property or industrial property is abutting a residential property. And in the ordinance, it says, you know, if it's separated by a city right-of-way or a street, that buffer is not required. So because, you know, West Lucas is there, there's no landscaping or buffering required on that side of the development. And still could today, yes.
Yes, go.
Chris, do you know between the drive, the proposed driveway and the street, is there even room there to do like landscaping as in a hedge row to provide that buffer between those residents? Is there any room there?
It's, that's why we'd love to see this, the survey, because it's, it's tight already, you can see that. And so whether or not, again, traffic is wanting ten feet, so whether or not there's an extra foot or two for a fence and or shrubbery, you know, some kind of buffering, we don't know. But again, it, it could be a condition of the S U P, you know, subject to there being enough room.
All right. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Sir, you had some negative comments. Would you like to come up and speak to her concerns real quick?
About the negative comments?
You have an opportunity to address that if you'd like to, how you would maybe go about addressing some of those concerns, maybe what the hours are.
And I, oh, the hours are between seven and seven, six days a week, and we're gonna be off on Sundays. We tried this Sunday to see how, just see how it worked. But the sign that I put on the back of the building is what, when, it will be, if, if it's passed for a drive-through, but right now, I put it up there for walk-ups, because I got to get, I'm trying to get my money back. That's what I was trying to do. So actually, we have people walk up to the window and order.
Is that sign lit? Is that a, is that a lit sign?
Nope, it's not a lit sign. I, and she says about, you know, the traffic, you hear that, you hear people racing up and down Lucas all day long and called her. It's, it's, and it's part of Beaumont growing. Well, this is what this, Beaumont's growing. You know, all her houses back there, rent houses back there, that, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk negative about anything. It's just, what about when you live next to a train track? You know, that's what I'm trying to say. It's, 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 it's noise. I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's just-
I think that addressed it. Thank you.
Would you, excuse me, would you be amenable to what she just asked for?
Yes, I would be, you know, most definitely. And also, there's approximately between, now, the easement, there's twenty-six feet from there, because the way the cul-de-sac curves in. I'd plant shrubbery if, if I was allowed to plant shrubbery on the easement. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that.
You're allowed to plant, usually a six, usually six feet is required around a parking lot or a driveway, if it's, if it's abutting a right-of-way. And so usually six feet is required. Three of that can be within the right-of-way. So even though it's in the city right-of-way, you can put that there.
Because I don't even know who did the, the drawing of this, because if you look at the, on, on the survey, it shows sixteen feet from the curb to the, to the easement, to the red line. And every builder that I've talked to, and I've been in the business thirty years, and they said normally it's ten feet. They think there was an error in the drawing of it, that it should have followed, followed the street a ten-foot easement. Is that correct? I mean, they, you know, but is normal ain't ten feet? Is it normal, ten feet, from the easement? From the property line to the city street, ain't there a ten-foot easement? Normal?
Setback, building setback, building setback, yes.
And this one here is sixteen. So there's six feet of plant and shrubbery in there. And I'm, I'm okay with doing that. So I'll just, I'll work with y'all. Y'all tell me what.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes the public hearing. Any discussion or have a motion?
Motion to approve P C twenty twenty-one three zero four with three conditions.
Do you want to add any condition?
No.
Second.
Second.
Our second was, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Don't, don't wanna rush y'all, but our city council does have a, a meeting at B I S D, I think it's six. So I may read this one a little quickly. Uh, P Z twenty twenty-one three two one is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow an auto repair shop in an N C neighborhood commercial district at eleven oh nine Harriet Street. Uh, Guadalupe Bernal would like to operate an auto repair shop at this location. An automotive shop is not permitted in an N C zoning district without a specific use permit. Staff received a complaint recently that many vehicles were being parked in and around this site, such that you could not see around the intersection. Upon investigation, it was discovered that the business was operating without a certificate of occupancy and had not been used continuously as an auto repair shop, so it was not grandfathered. And let me show you, the subject property is outlined in red. This is an aerial photo, and you can see the large number of cars parked in and around the facility. And here's a view of the site plan. This is a photograph of the subject property to the north, northeast, east, southeast, south, and to the west. And we did send out nineteen notifications. We received one in favor. We did receive three in opposition. Real quickly, Kenneth Twine of ten ninety Harriet is in opposition. He says, "I think I have the support of the community, because we have talked also. Many of the neighbors did not get the letter." And again, we only notified within a certain area of the property. Let's see, this must stop because, anyway, got a lot of complaints about the parking. Roosevelt and Brenda Frank at forty-one thirty-five Bob are also in opposition, saying oil is seeping onto the property, flood my lots with the cars, some don't run. And Cindy Mae Henderson at ten ninety Almas is opposed also. Uh, too many cars in the yard not being worked on can block corner, and you can't see cars coming. And then again, we did get one from Dolores Cantu, forty-six twenty-five Prairie Street, in support of the project. Based on this application, staff is recommending approval of the specific use permit, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of twenty vehicles to be on the property at any given time, including customer and employee parking. And number two, all auto repair must be conducted inside the shop. So with that, are there any questions for staff?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Prior to sending out the notice, were there any complaints from citizens about this particular property?
Yes, so this, that's how it was discovered, is people were complaining about the parking and the overflow of cars. So when we went out to investigate, that's when we found out there was no C O. Again, auto repair is allowed in N C, but you've gotta have a specific use permit, and so that's, that's why they're here before you today.
Can I see the subject property again?
Yes.
That aerial photograph?
Just the picture.
No, you just, I think you just passed it.
That one?
That one. When was that taken?
Friday.
That was taken Friday, uh, third, no, I think it was Thursday.
Last week.
Okay. Uh, because if I'm not mistaken, hadn't this been used as an auto place before?
Well, like I said, we discovered it's been used, I think, for many years as an auto place, but they-
Over twenty years?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Did they clean it up overnight?
So we started, we approached homeowners letters stating that they were in violation and, and that they had a choice. They could either clean off the property and leave, or they could apply for the S U P. And I don't think they understood at first, and they cleaned off the property. And then I-
Yeah, because there were cars everywhere.
Yes. And then somehow in the process, they finally, I think, understood that they could apply for the specific use permit, and that's why they're here today.
Well, I know what it looked like for the twenty years prior to this, this picture.
That's why I was shocked, too.
And I saw, I was thinking, this must have been a picture from twenty years ago. But you said it was a recent picture. So there was a lot of work done in the last several weeks.
If I could show you pictures of the aerial photographs from the last twenty years, it was progressive. You know, twenty years ago, there were very few cars there, but over the years, it's just increased, so there are more and more. And for the last at least five or ten years, it had looked like that, the, this.
Now that I remember.
And so for every, and Mr. London, I know you're new to the commission, so again, that's the idea behind allowing an auto repair shop in a neighborhood commercial district, but you've gotta have a specific use permit. Because it gives this council, this commission, and then the city council, the ability to say, you know, does that make sense in this neighborhood? Is it gonna cause any problems? And then have reasonable conditions to say, you know what, auto repair may be okay, but we gotta limit it to a certain number of cars, so it's not causing the problems that it has caused.
How did you come up with the number twenty?
You know, we try to calculate how many bays there are for repair, how many employees, and then a reasonable number of, you know, spots for storage, because people have to drop off their cars. People have to pick up their cars, so there's a little bit. So I think it's, it's usually based on the number of bays times three. And we, we don't have an exact ordinance. I think the city of Austin does. We've looked at that a little bit. And they have a specific num, number of spaces that's allocated per bay. Again, we don't have that, but that's kinda what this is based off of. They could.
How many bays, how many bays do they have?
Can you go back to the photograph?
The applicant may be able to answer that question, I don't know. Yeah, exactly, could you? Um, Chris, I just have one question. So if we approve this with these conditions, what happens when, if, if they violate a condition?
So again, we have a zoning enforcement officer, and so they would go out, issue a warning letter initially. And if it's not complied with, then we would file charges or complain in municipal court.
Mr. New?
So does this mean that we'll drag it out over two years?
You can always bring the specific use permit back for review by the council and revoke it if it's a violation and the violation continues.
So the council will have the authority to do that?
Yes.
And I have to go through the magistrate judge or any of the-
Don't have to.
But my question was, how many bays are there?
We're gonna, we're gonna ask the owner.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
Please come forward and, uh, please come forward and state your name and address.
Hello, uh, my name is Dolores Cantu. I live in forty-six twenty-five Prairie Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero seven. The lady shouldn't speak Spanish. I'm English.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm coming and talk to, um, the owner of the property.
Can you tell us how many bays there are for car repair?
For, inside supposed to be three, three spaces. And the outside, if you see right there, uh, the shed. Uh, we put a, a wiggle mark. It's already clean, wiggle mark for, uh, parking for the customers, plus for the, uh, employers. So, uh, my son and my husband, we was take, we was having this mechanic shop for about eighteen years. We never had problems. We never had any complaints. Uh, my husband passed away on two thousand thirteen, and I started renting the place on two thousand five, I mean, two thousand fifteen. But, um, I guess the, the renters got kind of messed up with a lot of cars. So now they got in this, uh, position. And now they learning. I told them, you know, what's supposed to be really clean, because the vision place on both sides has to be clean, you know? And, uh, it's why they clean. They, they have been clean for, for a month, or maybe a little bit over a month. And now, you know, they waiting for you to, to accept that.
And the twenty, the twenty vehicles on the property includes the customer and employee parking?
The, yes, the twenty, yes, includes the customers and the employers.
How many employees?
They got five, uh, including with the lady. She is the, the owner, I mean, the, uh, the secretary, sorry.
The, uh, also, to the other side of the property, that vacant lot, is that yours too?
Uh, which other side?
The opposite side of this building? There's always, used to be dump trucks parked on that side.
No, it's not my property.
That's not your property?
No.
That has an SUP for the dump trucks.
Okay.
No, my property, my other property is across the yellow building.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for her? Well, it's, it, he's in the public, so he can come up when she's done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if anybody would like to speak for or against, you can come to, to the front, please.
My name is Roosevelt Frank.
Wait till you get to the microphone, sir, so we can hear you better.
My name is Roosevelt Frank, uh, where the dump trucks are. That's I own it.
What is your address, sir?
Just adjacent to that property.
Okay, can you, can you list it for the record, please?
Beg your pardon?
Will you just state your address for the record, please?
Uh, I'm, I can't, uh, recall the address right now without looking at the, uh, it, I, I didn't know, uh, didn't know the physical address until I got the papers, and I mailed that back to you guys. But, uh, I own that property and, uh, I mean, my property had cars on it, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I, I don't have no problem with them having a, uh, a mechanic shop there, because when this lady that was talking, Ms. Cantu, uh, her husband used to have a mechanic shop there, and it never was that many cars. They have so many cars parked on that area where I park my trucks at. Uh, sometimes I can't turn my pickup, pickup truck around in it. So I, I've never seen it like that before. So I don't have no problem with them opening up a shop, and I asked them to move it, move the cars. He take his time in doing it. Got a couple of them parked there right now. You know, so it's up to you guys whether you want to let them open one or not, but, uh.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I'm just saying, y'all, y'all seem to have all the facts.
Alright.
So ain't, ain't much I can add to that anyway.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Alright, anybody else for or against? Seeing none?
I had a question.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then you can ask your, and now we'll go into our discussion. Now I can ask a question. There you go. Go for it. You can ask it.
Saying that they were already operating, you said they never had a permit to operate as an automotive shop until now?
Yes, we don't, we don't have any certificate of occupancy on file.
No problem. Okay, uh, any other discussion, questions for, for staff?
No.
Okay.
Public comment is closed.
Right. Public comment is clo, oh, I should've offered her a rebuttal, right? Okay, but I reopen it so that you can address the comments, ma'am.
Yes, uh, we never had a, a permit, because we, uh, went to the courthouse. We went upstairs on the, uh, uh, the codes, and they not told us anything. They say you free to, to do your business, you know, long you have a clean space and front and the back, whatever, you know? And I, that's why we did, but we, we look around for any permits or something, you know? They never say nothing. They say we was free to go in the business. I don't know now. Uh, I think now is because a lot of people's complain about the, the vision on the, from one side to another one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's try it again. Now let's close the public hearing and have a discussion, and we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Brady. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Discussion, um, I'm still a bit concerned about the number of vehicles allowed on the property at one time, which we don't have a definite answer about how many stalls that's available at this particular, um, auto repair shop. So I would like to amend that to fifteen.
Okay, then we're gonna go back and revisit. Uh, the motion is still on the floor, so do you want to change your motion or keep it at twenty?
The twenty is, is a good number.
Okay. So the same motion, we still have the same second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so that's the motion that moves forward, is with the condition of twenty and the auto repair conducted inside the shop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next case, Chris? Thirty, three twenty-four?
Alright, final case on today's agenda is PZ twenty twenty-one three twenty-four. And it is to consider a request to rezone the property, uh, from NC Neighborhood Commercial to RS Residential Single Family at four four seven five Raven Street. Let's pass forward here. Uh, Kelly Hardy would like to rezone the property in question. Uh, the property is located just north of the convenience store at forty-four ninety Bob Street. Uh, previously, these lots and the convenience store were all part of the same property. The property owner would like to rezone the lot, uh, in question to RS Single Family in order to build a new house or houses. All the surrounding property except the convenience store is residential. And you can see in front of you, uh, this is the convenience store on West Virginia, and you can see this is the property that, uh, they are parcelling off to develop a house. Uh, we did send twenty-eight notices out. We received one in favor, zero in opposition. Um, you can see the area surrounded but for the convenience store by RS, RS Properties. Uh, this is property in question. The view of the subject property into the east, north, northwest, south, that's the convenience store. And based on this application, staff is recommending approval. Um, any questions of staff? Any questions of staff?
No.
No. Alright, is the, is the applicant in the audience? Would you please come forward, state your name and address?
My name is Wesley Thomas. I'm the representative of Camilla Homes, which is, uh, my secretary is Kelly Hardy. And like I say, if you see on the pictures itself, it's already been residential, uh, homes in that area. Uh, basically, we're just going on Raven Street, which the store is on Bob Street. And on one of those pictures, you can see where it already has a driveway already cut to the property. So we're just asking to make it back to residential, still being busy.
Alright, any questions for the gentleman?
You're going to build a house over there, single-family house?
Sir?
You're going to build a house?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Single-family house?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wants to speak for or against this case? Okay, uh, public hearing is closed. Any discussion?
No.
Do you, you, did you want to speak? Um, yeah, she.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Lori Rochelle, forty-five twenty-five Winston Drive. I speak for, this is a property that, a house that I'm trying to build for myself and my mother, elderly mother.
Nice. Alright, thank you. And we'll close it. Alright, discussion or motion?
Motion to approve PC twenty twenty-one three two four.
Second. Second.
Alright, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we need a motion to adjourn? How does that work? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.